Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Stand for the pledge, we'll have more in silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Douglas, present. Mr. Amorando?
Present.
Mr. Ferrioli?
Here.
Mr. Nibasiani?
Present.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Present.
Mrs. Adams?
Present.
Mr. Nucci?
Present.
Mrs. Donnelly?
Present.
Mrs. Nanty?
Present.
Mrs. Mittman?
Present.
Mrs. Hughes?
Present.
Mrs. Ginnis?
Present.
Thank you. Were there any changes in here?
Yep.
So we're moving on with suspending the planning session. Motion in a second? A motion? In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we're moving over to the board committee. Alright, need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Ollie?
I'm recommending that the board choose the area for the internal audit this year. Recommending payroll and related other matters, prevent payroll to be made another time. That has been tested in a number of years.
I believe that's from 2007?
Yes.
In the motion, we've resolved that the Board of Education authorize the district's internal auditing from Sirene and Associates to conduct an audit of the district's payroll and stipends for the which year. 2016, 17?
2016, here, so they'll look at your moves.
Oh, okay.
What's my next year?
I need a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we're adjourned our portion, and we're reconvening to planning session. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving over to minutes of January 12, 2016. There's this meeting, lunch, guidelines, development, and audit committee. I need a motion?
Motion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're moving over to commendations, education spotlight, or scientist recognition.
Okay, so tonight, we have Mr. Lasher, who has a few wonderful art and music students that we're going to recognize tonight for some of your achievements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm once again here to recognize some wonderful students from our music and art program. As we know, we have one of the best anywhere, and we're so lucky, and that's because of our students, and it's also because of our wonderful teachers, I want to make that point as well. So I'd like to first bring up, we have Chelsea Perticon and Julia Ayalo, if they'll come up with me. So Chelsea and Julia are recognized because they were selected and participated in the NISMA All-State Festival this year. So out of the hundreds and hundreds of children across the state that auditioned, they were chosen by their solo, that they performed their solo audition, to be part of the All-State Festival, which was back in December in Rochester. And it goes without saying that that achievement is just incredible to be selected out of all of us. Chelsea, this is her second time, two years in a row.
Woo-hoo!
So, and she's your senior this year, and are we going to music school?
Yeah.
No choices yet? Not there yet?
Yeah, solo audition.
Okay, okay, so we have one, we still have another one to music education, so we did, we did our job. So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
What instrument do you play?
Oh, I'm sorry, they're both singers, and you were in the mixed women's choir, and you were in the...
The mix.
The mixed choir. Alright, picture here, ready? There you go. Congratulations. And for the third year, I believe, third year in a row, we have a student that was recognized by the Long Island Arts Alliance. They do a art poster contest every year, and we've had students enter every year, and this year, we actually have a grand prize winner, who can act what, and that is Katrina De Naro. This is the winning piece of poster, and it was done in Photoshop, correct? You want to show it to the board in the demonstration first?
So what inspired that picture?
Well, because it was supposed to be about like a woman, and I didn't change it, it's like her roots are in the front, so it's like, right?
That was very nice.
So, so it's been in my office waiting, and so now, I guess we have to, oh, it's somewhere in the high school, I had to come in my office unfortunately, because I've been looking at it for a couple of months now.
Mr. Lasher, there you go.
This is Katrina, with Regent Roger Tillis, and the executive director for the Long Island Arts Alliance, Mrs. Smith. So, and the check that she received for her prize.
And Katrina's only in 10th grade.
You're 9th grade?
10th.
Okay, so you have two, three more weeks to those awards.
Congratulations. Hold it up for me. No, no, it's good. Congratulations, thank you. My fault, Mr. Hargreaves is one of his teachers, he is here to, he has a few words to say. Also, Mr. Repone is one of his teachers.
I have lucky enough to have Katrina this year, can be referenced one, and, you know, humbled by the talent. It soothes from her pores. I have some kind words, though, from Ms. Latuga, who was her teacher last year, got her on the phone, she couldn't be here this evening, she wishes she could, but she wanted me to tell you this, alright? I'm so, I am so thrilled to congratulate Katrina De Naro for being the grand prize winner in the Arts Alive Ally 2015 Poster Contest. This is the biggest award, by the way, that they get out, so. Katrina's creative and colorful design was chosen from more than 165 submissions by judges that include artists, museum curators, and art educators. The grand prize included a $300 gift certificate from the Long Island Arts Alliance, which was presented to Katrina by Roger Tillis at the Arts Alive Ally 2015 Press Conference in September. The winning poster is part of the 2015 Art Alive Ally commemorative poster series, and was on exhibit at the Long Island Children's Museum this past October. In case you didn't get to see it, it's around, John's got it. Katrina made a beautiful speech during the press conference, in she, in that she stated, "Art has become my passion. All students should have the chance to discover what they can do through the arts." As Katrina's teacher, Ms. Latuga speaking, "I had the honor of facilitating her creative passion. She is one of the most hardworking students I have ever encountered in my teaching career. She's a very diligent worker, who is intrinsically motivated and extremely talented. We literally had laughter and tears during many hours working on this piece. Katrina was present in class, utilizing every gigasegundos, to keep her, designing as well as during her lunch and many times after school, to complete her masterpiece. I'm so thankful I got the opportunity to watch in amazement as she created this piece from concept to completion. Katrina, I will hold wonderful memories of this particular creative..." I know how much she wants to be here, and... "I will hold wonderful memories of this particular creative endeavor that will last a lifetime. Love you, and an enormous congratulations. I knew from the beginning of the school year that you were and always will be my grand prize winner."
Get help people in your mouth.
Come on up, too.
One more.
Well, Ken, he didn't want to come up before.
He got pressured into it now. He heard his name four times.
Well, now he's got to come back up.
Come on, John. There are separate chances.
Too many, not all the chance. Congratulations.
So now I have the opportunity to commend some of our volunteers. On January 12, I received a letter, and I'm going to read a piece in that letter. "The New York State School Boards Association's School Boards View: Recognition Program Is Designed to Recognize the Extensive Time and Effort of School Board Members to Continually Strive to Esperance Their Governance, Knowledge, and Skills. NISMA's Recognition Program Is Comprised of Four Achievement Levels. Members Qualify For Recognition Points By Participating in NISMA Developmental activities Such As the New Member Academy, Board Officers Academy, Annual Prevention, Video Conferences, Regional Workshops, or District Level Custom Improvement Programs. Four Achievement Levels Are Board Achievement, Board Excellence, Board Mastery, and Board Lifetime Achievement. So I am pleased to recognize today for Board Achievement Awards, Mr. Krykanamrado." And Mr. Nicholas Ferrioli. And also, Ms. Susan Lyle Foss.
Oh, ooh, I get one, too.
How's the business?
How's the business?
Thank you.
Okay, ladies, we're moving over to reports on the student government representatives.
So we're starting the Valentine's Day Flower Sales here, and then the Spring Egg Hunt, we're starting to plan that also. We're on Easter time, we're all little kids, we go to the high school, and they serve our eggs. And the seniorship's happening this weekend, and this year was our largest turnout ever. We have more than 450 students attend.
I'm going to speak about the Civic Association today. We're doing an event called Winter Around the World, and it's happening this Monday. It's an event to help the E&amp;L students and their families welcome to our community. The Anti-Bullying Club and Civic Association spoke to Mr. Costa about an idea Mrs. Goodwin had, about doing an eighth-grade mixer to ease the middle school's transition into high school, so that's hopefully coming up. Civic will be working with Stony Brook University to do a book collection for various Long Island communities. And Civic and Anti-Bullying Club will be working together during the Radio Max of Kindness Week, which is coming up.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Alright, we're moving over to, you guys want to leave, or you want to stay? It's your choice. Moving over to policy.
Good night, thanks for coming.
Thank you, everybody. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Go Katrina! Woo-hoo!
Thank you!
Okay, I'm going to take the motion, and then we're going to have a discussion on the policy. No motion?
Oh, motion, sorry.
I'll second it. Okay, and we have a special, any questions anyone has regarding policy? I actually have a question. We have the graduation requirements. Last year, as you know, that we fell into, we gave a couple of appeals last year, does that address that in this as well, or is that a separate policy?
Yeah, we did discuss that, that's not part of policy. Policy was on graduation requirements itself, and appeals can assist in something.
Is that something, okay, that was my question there, are you guys...
Basically, we felt that should be addressed separately. We need to put, we need to put back in place the policy that was suspended last year, graduation laws, and we have graduation requirements, so we put that back in place, which is basically the law. You know, what's required by New York State, and then we also felt that...
Can you turn your microphones on, I'm sorry?
This one's not working.
Test.
Basically, that, you know, we put the graduation requirements back in place, and they were updated as well, not to go through the special ed and everything, and we did this process as well. It was updated to meet the current requirements, which are, I understand, changing drastically as we speak. So it's up to date as of last week. We'll see how that changes down the road, but we did feel that, obviously, there wasn't issues last year that needs to be addressed, and we need to bring in all the stakeholders and figure out, before we get to that point, how we're going to, you know, deal with what happened last year.
Okay, so will it be...
It's not a policy thing, so that's...
Okay, so a timeline that would be linked in?
One of the things that was part of the policy is the attendance policy, that is, the purpose of policy, the tenant protocol, that is, and I know, this panel brought it up last week as well, which is something that's done by site-based, which I, I think it needs to stay in the hands of site-based, and the stakeholders that are most close to it, which is the high school teachers, administration, parents, students of high school. It's something that steering committee can look at and make recommendations to the site-based team, and I think both schools will work that in steering committee and make recommendations, but high school gets to really work on that protocol together.
Now, has this site-based, I thought I saw the opportunity, it just got really silver?
I don't know that. None of us are on that site-based team, so I would have to...
I was on it last year, but I'm not.
Okay, I will find that out for you.
Does anyone else have any more questions? Okay, motion to... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have anything on the report?
Yes.
Okay, we have 9280 for professional staff development, taking...
It was basically an outdated policy, because everything is in the contracts as far as their program, so it's, I haven't looked at some content on the board in 22 years, and it was completely outdated, it doesn't apply to...
So it's obsolete?
Yeah. Everything's a cover.
Okay, need a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving over to new business, discussion items. Need a motion, and then we'll have a discussion on items one through seven. Discuss, discussion item procedure, 2016, 17, school calendar, word microphones, audio visual recording devices. Number four is the new high school clubs. Number five is boys and girls from teens. Number six is the fiscal climate presentation. Seven is Rental Choice and Education Act. So Linda, I guess you'll take the first one.
Actually, school calendar, Mr. Mittman, let's go speak that.
So, we're passing out a copy of the Eastern Suffolkosse's draft calendar, as well as four different versions of a possible school calendar for us. All the versions, clerical, all the units receive those drafts as well, and we have meetings set up over the next week or two to go through those drafts for the different bargaining units. If you look at Draft A, that is the most similar to the Eastern Suffolkosse's calendar, where school will begin on, after their day, which is Tuesday, September 6. Actually, A is exactly what the Suffolkosse's calendar. Draft B would have schools beginning prior to Labor Day, with the superintendent's conference day. September 6 would be a teacher orientation day, and then students would start on Wednesday, September 7. What that would allow the district to do would be to give November 23 off, which is the day before the Thanksgiving break. If you go to Draft C, again, the students, schools start to begin before Labor Day for teachers. September 6 would be the first Tuesday, would be teacher orientation day. Wednesday would be the first day for students. What this would allow us to do would be to take the three-day weekend, there's a, if you look at October, October 10 is a holiday. We have school in session October 11, and October 12 is another holiday, so that would allow the district to take the 10th, 11th, and 12th off. Instead of having a break and obstruction. Draft D, again, has the staff starting prior to Labor Day. The first day of school would be for students on Tuesday, September 6. We would propose to move Superintendent's Conference Day to the October 11, which is the date between the two holidays. It would give us an opportunity to provide some staff development. Not many districts would be offered that day as well, so it would provide an opportunity for us to secure any outside personality who could come in from our staff. And that would also give us the opportunity to have a vacation day prior to the start of Thanksgiving, so it would be the day before Thanksgiving. So at no point do students start prior to Labor Day. The last three options would have staff coming in at least one day prior to the start of Labor Day. So again, meeting with both the clerical unit, as well as the CTA within the next two weeks, and we'll come back with more. Questions?
I, I'm, I'm, but, you know, I guess... Oh, no question. Can we do away with the February break and get out earlier in June?
Yeah, right.
Right, that much power, yeah.
Yes, you do.
Harry, is there anything that anyone's particularly leaning towards?
Well, actually, my only, yeah, my only question is, yeah, who does finalize this? So you got to CTA and clerical, who makes the final decisions?
We have some contractual obligations that we are bound to. Last year, we had a similar situation where we had a break that was, actually, this current school year. We did work with one of the bargaining units to create an MOA, so that we can change the calendar a little bit, and provide the opportunity to move some of the days around. In some of the drafts, I think particularly in the last three drafts, we would have to work with one of our bargaining units to agree to that.
Because of coming back before Labor Day?
Well, because we usually, the past practice has been, we have Superintendent's Conference Day, then we have a teacher orientation, so we're going to break that up.
Okay. I don't have it.
You have no thoughts, anything you're leaning towards in particular?
I, my personal opinion, I like A, because I don't like coming back before Labor Day. But if you're going to choose, when they do come back before Labor Day, I think the best one is C, where you have the three days off in a row, this way people can do what they wish. You don't have, whether the teacher's parents don't have the day off, the day of instruction, missed instruction, or any day off. So if you're going to come back there before Labor Day, C is probably the best choice, otherwise I would choose A, not coming back.
And the students start on the...
But that's really more...
So the students would start on the 7th?
7th. A.
And then the only thing on this particular calendar, so I was actually looking at C as well, is that this is actually the first year where I remember that we didn't have that Wednesday, or before Thanksgiving, we always had it years prior.
It comes and goes, it's not...
Yeah, yeah, I remember, you know, I remember having...
Every district's different, too, we didn't have...
Right.
It's almost identical to the 2011, 2012 school calendar.
Oh, okay. I do like the idea of having 10, 11, and 12 to off, instead of breaking up the instruction to come back any of this.
Yeah, and the way it works out with the holidays, you actually have a really nice stretch in September to start the school year, where you have a good, you know, three and a half solid weeks, which you normally don't have, so...
Yeah, Tony, you picked Steve's, I'm actually leaning towards that one, too.
If, if, if they're willing, I mean, that's honestly, to me, a preference of bargaining units, if they want to come back before September, because I personally have no desire to come back before September, so that would just be my choices. It's not me.
Lee, your thoughts?
I want, I'd like them to come back after we've discussed it with the different units, and that would make a decision.
Ted?
After Labor Day is good, then I have three days off for my homework, too. Ted's.
What should I be looking at?
Where can I go?
Alright, so we're going to table this until you have a discussion.
And I'll, I'll bring back the policy from the board.
When do we have to decide on this, by?
Osce's haven't, Osce's hasn't moved it on their, their calendar yet, so usually you want to wait till Osce's votes and settles their calendar, and they're going to vote this month, so next month, we talk, maybe the best time to go on that session. So by that time, Dee, you'll have all your answers?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to word microphones, audio visual, recording devices.
This one was Mark.
Oh, that was me?
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to get the board's idea on purchasing the microphones and audio recording for our meetings. It was a portable device, I think, John, you speak, and John, you can speak to it a little bit?
Pat.
Oh, Pat, you can speak to a little bit about it, it was a portable...
The unit that we're actually looking at is, when we first started off back last March, their first request was to replace the existing microphones that we had. Each one of those microphones cost approximately $250, and to replace them all, we felt it was, came back that it was a little bit too much, and then to be able to put in hardwired microphones. And then also be able to record the board meetings. That would take upgrading some of the equipment that was in there. The original price came in at about $8,000. We were told, no, we don't want to look at that, we want to look at a portable recording device that we can then plug into here, that we can then record the board meetings, and then post up on the website. We're looking at having all hardwired microphones, except for one wireless microphone for the, for the day, for the podium here, and I think it's about seven hardwired microphones that would then plug into a small unit, that'll record the board meetings, that can then be plugged into the unit that's here. And I think the price that we have for that is about 2,000, it's roughly $2,200. Although those units are portable, the entire system is not. We would have to then get another portable PA. We would have to then get another portable PA that if we look to wish to take the board meetings to various buildings has a separate amplifier for, to take the whole thing as a roadshow. So right now, the pieces that we have, that we've, we're ready to cut a purchase order probably tomorrow, is to be able to have us have all wired microphones, be able to record all the devices, and that stuff itself could be taken to, you know, plugged into any other PA system that we have.
Some schools will be able to utilize this for their plays or their concerts?
Most likely not. Again, unless we, you know, we wish to just have them, you know, record what they've got.
Why is one system portable and one system not?
Well, it's, the, well, the, the actual system that we have here is got, we've got speakers in the ceilings, and that's a hard system that, you know, hardwired in system that's here.
I don't mean that system that's current. I mean, the first system you talked about purchasing, and then you said we got to purchase a second one if we wanted to take, you know, have a system that we could take to Sycamore for bigger meetings or somewhere else. What's the difference between those two?
It's probably another $1,000 to buy the actual, it's like a, it's a vendor venue system that has the, you know, the, the speakers that are actually detached, that we can then set up.
So it makes it portable?
Yes, it would make the entire thing portable. It'll be about another $1,000 for that.
So it takes it to a portable level, we could move to another location.
So what's our total price tag?
About $3200.
$3200?
Twenty-two, twenty-three hundred.
What's that, with the thousand?
With the thousand figure, twenty, thirty-three, thirty-three hundred.
What is the purpose, what, what's the objective of discussing this? Why is this being done?
It was brought to our attention, and it was brought to you to discuss. So we would record the board meetings, and they would go on our website, so they would be clicking our website so people could actually hear the deliberation that was happening.
So it's not because people, the audience can't hear us?
Well, that's part of it. We need to upgrade these mics in order for us to make sure that we have enough mics for, to go for the PA system that's here. But it's also to allow the ability to record the board meetings and, and put them on the, the website. And whose, whose responsibility will it be to host the board meetings? Uh, the, our IT department, so someone in the boss's has to pass the call this. So a reasonable time would be like three, four days after our meetings, would that would be posted? What's reasonable time?
I would say, within a few days.
Lee, your thoughts?
I think they're doing a good job right now. They're very, very good at it. I don't know if people are gonna sit there and listen to a board meeting versus watching a board meeting instead of doing that. So I, I don't know. I don't think I would sit there and listen to a board meeting. It would just, it would be audio.
Only audio?
So audio.
It's only audio.
Wow, wow.
It's only audio.
Audio only. So I don't know if people really would sit there and listen to that. I don't know. I suppose yes, audio only.
Ted, your thoughts?
I mean, it's just audio, really doesn't make sense. There's so much technology out there, I mean, somebody's doing the first parade.
Why is the only audio? No, this was only a audio system.
Nick? What are, what are our options as far as not going to upgrade? What is the cost factor to upgrade what we have here so people can hear clearly? The microphone system at Sycamore is terrible when we're traveling. So if we had something that's gonna be better, if those got used, what's that, what's the difference?
So you're just looking for mics and amplifiers?
Looking for the differences, so that I know if I'm gonna spend $1,500 there, I can get a system where I have the ability to record audio for the future possibly, for some reason, for $2,200.
Ted, do you have that different?
One of the original pieces we looked at when we first started addressing this was that taking the wireless pieces here, because the system here and the system in Sycamore are similar. We were looking at taking the wireless pieces here and moving them to Sycamore as, to be used as needed when the board meetings, I think, moved over there. And then putting another unit in here that would all be hardwired in, that would allow the recording of the board meetings here. But we were still gonna try to use this equipment, what we were gonna pull out of here and use over in Sycamore. And that was that $8,525 price that we'd originally gotten.
For speakers here, so they can hear us?
It was gonna take the wireless pieces here and move them to Sycamore.
Right, and then you went to your new system.
And then, and then put new hardwired microphones here.
And that costs $8,000?
Huh?
That costs $8,000?
Yes.
Wow.
That's pretty hefty price tag.
And solely because they're hardwired and, and upgraded?
It was, it was, it was actually, it was moving a lot of the technology. The system that was first put in here, I'm gonna venture to say the system that was originally put in here is probably a $15,000 system. So when you start looking to replace certain components, it wasn't a little tiny device we were looking to plug in. It was actually a rack-mounted device that would be stored right in, right inside that cabinet, and taking the wireless pieces and moving them over to Sycamore. That was the first to try to, you know, reutilize as much of the equipment as possible, because I know that when, when board meetings have to move to Sycamore, the quality is less than desired.
And we still have the ones that we used to have?
Yeah.
Those are Sycamore, that's what we used there, I think, last time. Maybe we just need more of these, these little things.
Of these microphones.
The microphones, because apparently they're not any over here.
Yes, when I first located it, to replace these microphones, it was about $250 a piece.
Can we add more to the system?
Um, I think that we have either eight or 10 microphones are ready for this system.
We don't know where they are.
Yeah, I think they're all on, but it said, I think that a lot of, it's, it's the batteries only last a certain lifespan.
Which one doesn't work?
We don't have any over here.
The rest?
We are, you know, there's one that we're sharing.
Yes, I have one that's gone. So, all right, can we try to locate the rest and make sure they're working?
They don't work.
Oh, they don't?
That's why they're not out.
They don't work, because that's why this one doesn't work either. Don't we go with a not working?
It does work.
This one works, this one does not.
Could you hear in this? So we need to put this in the discard pile and figure out what we do. We have a working. Sorry.
My gift, what?
I, I agree with Lee, unless there's a big demand from the public that's asking to hear, you know, to hear what's going on with board meetings. If there is a big demand, then maybe we should look into that. But if there's not a big demand, then I would just go to spend very terrible funds. No, I think we do need to fix what we have or figure out why some of these aren't working or whatever the situation is, though. I think three microphones is quite enough for all of us.
I have been to a great, $300 is a lot of money, and I'm not ready to spend that on microphones. I don't think it's fair to raise to spend that money. I'm just a little shocked by the price tag, I didn't think it would be that much. So in the meantime, boys, give up your microphone to the ladies and speak up.
Thank you, Pat.
Pat, is it possible that you can maybe give the board via email, like, some hard numbers to look at, so?
Sure.
The different vendors?
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving over to New York, New High School Clubs. I understand that there's two, see, one advisor, is the other advisor here? Yes, the two advisors are here, what is the? Yeah, the one advisor? Don't be afraid, I won't bite, I promise you. I understand there was another advisor supposed to be here, but, oh, there she is, I'm sorry. Come on, come on, don't be afraid, don't be afraid. At the last board meeting, we had a discussion about the two new clubs that wanted to be approved. Is it possible that you guys could tell us a little bit about these clubs?
Well, it started out, it's the Animal Conservation Club, but it started out as the Hard Shell Clam Program. That, about 10 years ago, I wrote a grant proposal, and the National Grid and the Nature Conservancy, they had paid for this program. But with budget cuts, then they stopped paying for it. But this program, it involves 30 to 40 students in the high school. They, they brought recognition to the high school. We've won various awards. Students have received scholarships from being in the program. And they give back to the community. It's, they can get community service from me, a certificate of up to 30 hours in the course of the year. And basically, they grow clams. They grow clams and oysters. We grow about 200,000 clams, over 100,000 oysters. They can do research projects in the program. We don't have any science clubs in the high school besides robotics, so you don't have any opportunity for kids that are interested in science or just to be in the outdoors to actually do something. So we go on various trips. They learn about the history of clamming, the importance of clams as a keystone species to purify our drinking water. They, like I said, they give back to the community by growing these clams. They build rafts on two afternoons, so the kids, they get a little hands-on with construction. Some of them have never even held a hammer. And what's a nice part about the program is that it involves kids that are anywhere from special ed or on the artistic spectrum, all the way up to honors and AP students. So I don't discriminate as to what your academic background is, go through to any student in the high school. And the kids seem to all work together in the program. And it, it also incorporates during the summer. The program starts, say, in January. This Monday, we'll be dissecting the clams. So they learn about the anatomy of the clams, they learn about the history, the retail industry of it. They build rafts, they use calipers, they learn how to measure clams, how to check salinity of water. But we don't have anything like this going on in the high school. And during the summer, they go out and they monitor the clam rafts, they clean clam rafts, and then in the fall, we harvest the clams. And we put them back into the Long Island Sound or Great Sound Bay.
I know of you kids, students, who were in your club. Not only do they speak highly of you, but they love the club. And I was, it was nice to see their expression, like, their, you know, enthusiasm over it. And I'm like, because when I first heard about it a few months ago, I'm like, playing the club? And I'm like, it was, they enjoyed it very much, and they thought you did a tremendous job on the club.
So the club is just huge.
Well, it's not, it's technically been a program. For the past 10 years, I've been running a program where I receive chaperone day if, for each outing that I'm with these students. So I was.
Where do you go, where do you go to?
Where do we go to?
Where do you go to, you know, like, harvest clams, do you go, any fish hatch trees? Do you work in construction, everybody, like, I know?
Yes, we work with, we work with Western Suffolk Bosie's, with the environmental educator there, Melinda Nickel. And we, we have the clam rafts or built at Caleb Smith State Park. And then we are in Stony River Harbor. I'm not sure, because the water is a little warmer and the clams grow better there than on, say, the Great Sound Bay.
I always had to say that the children are not allowed to eat the clams.
They are not allowed, or you don't want them to eat?
No, I thought I heard that they are not allowed to, or are they allowed to eat it? That's why I wasn't sure.
They are allowed to.
So they are allowed to eat it, okay.
The kids want to, we used to go to Land and Sea, this restaurant out east, and they used to learn about the retail industry of clamming, and how they tag, and what are the laws and regulations of the shellfish industry. And the kids, when we went to the restaurant, they said, well, we don't wanna just go to the restaurant, we actually wanna eat the clams. So I had to figure out, make sure that there weren't any food allergies. But for the last two years, we've incorporated where we go to a fish market, local now, Capua Clam. And then we go to Western Suffolk Bosie's, to the Wilson Tech. And they have four different recipes, Clam's Casino, Lagoon's Clam Sauce, and some others. And they actually prepare a meal. And they love it, because it's kids at all different levels working together. It doesn't matter how smart you are, they just, they just all mesh together and they find their place in the club. So they really enjoyed that particular, became a banquet with all the bread and stuff. But again, you find something that the kids are the ones that gave us ideas of what to incorporate into this program. It's not officially a club, because there were no openings for a club until, I don't know if it was Helping Hands or some type of club went out in the high school, and then there was a window where the club could be available.
I'm sorry, what's the name of the program?
Well, the program is the Hard Shell Clam Mariposa Program. Mariposa means the farming, we grow the plants, basically. And we're growing oysters too, because it's very easy to grow them. But we can incorporate research projects on those rafts. Right now, we have like three to four 12-foot rafts, floating rafts that we grow these clams in. And it's a very unique program or club that I'd like to speak. We have had our subject, say, science teachers, winners from our high school. Mary Losing always asked me to nominate a student because my program is the only program that the kids are doing something science-related. So if you're gonna stand up there and talk about this winner of this award, and what is, what are their accomplishments, there aren't any opportunities out there, except for, like I said, now the robotics club.
How many students participate this year?
I wanna say close to 40. I keep telling them to bring friends.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go, just bring somebody along with you, because more people will come if they have a friend that's gonna go along with them.
We all know that Chuck claims it, right?
Um, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I haven't had dinner yet, and I, I don't know.
And it's my fault, I knew you both were on the spot, so forgive me, I, you know, just excited by you guys presenting your club.
That's okay, I'm excited too. Well, the, the name of the club is the Comic Book Club. And has anyone, anyone? All right, well, I, I teach, I teach a comic book class, it's a half-year. And unfortunately, a half-year isn't a whole lot of time to cover the, the skill set that's required. It's, the missing section most people have is comics, is, you know, Marvel, DC, superheroes, but it's, it's not, it's a storytelling week, a storytelling week, all right, like fiction, even, you know, documentaries, science fiction. So it incorporates literacy, because we're talking about words and pictures. And that's why I first proposed the class. Unfortunately, I've had a lot of kids who came up to me and wanted to take the class, but there's just not, there's only one section, and it's a half-year. And I just made it a, I, I had to fight for a long time to, to get it to be a full year. But even then, like I said, the skill set is so broad, because you're, you're not, you're not just talking about, you know, illustration where you were telling a story with one image. I, I teach story construction, short story construction, we do one-page comics, two-page comics. They do a little bi- direct comics. And it got to the point that enough students were coming up to me and asking about the class and being frustrated, because A, it wasn't being taught all year, and B, you know, they, they just didn't have room for their schedule that might propose to be a first club. So I had a general interest meeting. And, you know, I can talk about comics all day, I'm trying to keep it brief. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask, but I don't wanna. So I had a general interest meeting, and I had twenty-eight kids show up. And that was about a month ago. And now, two to three times a week, I have kids coming in besides my students that wanna know, you know, when the Comic Book Club is, is happening. So there is an interest.
How often would you meet?
I'm sorry?
How often would you meet?
Oh, well, I'd meet every day, I don't think my wife would like it too much. But I was thinking about once a week, Tuesdays, so this way the kids can get to the comic store when they're, that's when they come.
Oh, there you go. So they have a goal with mine, Andy?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Actually, I don't know if you guys read the charter, but what I was really hoping to do, and we might be getting some new technology to do it, is at the end of the year, well, not, not this year, because I don't have any time, but at the end of next year, what I'd like to do is self-publish an annual of student work. You know, one of them could design the cover, and then the interior would be filled with, with student comics.
Make sure the board gets that.
And the thing that I, I enjoy about it is that, you know, I have students who, and. and it's a, it's, it can either be a solo or a collaborative effort. All right, so you can have students who aren't really comfortable drawing, um, aren't, aren't interested in it, but they wanna tell stories. So they'll write the script, give it off to someone else, and then someone else will do, you know, the finished artwork. Or, you know, you'll, you'll pencil it, you'll ink it, you'll color it, you'll letter it, and then you'll do the cover, and now, you know, you have a marketing together. It's, and it's great to see them bounce ideas off each other. And, you know, some of whom do wanna work solo and others integrate and collaborate. But uh, so we, we may be getting some, um, some tech. Uh, hopefully, that I'll be able to, cause it's very difficult. Some of whom, uh, their handwriting really isn't up to par. So some of whom, uh, have a hard time lettering traditional. But um, hopefully, I can, we can scan them in, and then have the kids letter and color digitally. Uh, and then that'll make setting up the printer.
Yeah, the twenty-eight students you said, they, they came to a meeting, or they?
I had a general interest meeting just because, you know, I wanted to see what, you know, what the interest was.
Did you notice what grade level they were?
Oh, all of them, she's, um, um, all right.
Was it like the ninth graders, or the tenth graders? Did you get a sense, or not? Any seniors?
I got, oh, yeah, yeah. Um, and some of whom are disappointed because it didn't happen this year, so they're not gonna be around when it's, you know, the publishers here.
I, I know that, uh, I bumped into Mr. Costa in the hall, in the hallway here. And he is going over to staff all the clubs. Uh, and they're doing a lot of things in terms of looking at the clubs that we have, what's in place, how many students, and what they think that they might want for next year. So it's going through a process, so I think that you should be talking with him. And uh, Clam, I don't know your, your name, but I know I'm-
Bo, Bo Jiao.
I, I've heard you speak before about, about this. And I think you should be sitting and talking with him. Uh, now telling him the important stuff. So when he puts together a proposal that I'm sure he's gonna share with the board, that uh, you're at the top of the list. But, you know, I know they're working hard at looking at everything and what's, what they think it's due, so I would go there.
I'm in trouble, and, and, oh. And I, we, you know, we had a discussion in the beginning of the year. Um, what I was hoping to really do is put on, and I, I still have to contact. I, I saw Hop Hop Two had a, uh, a craft fair. Um, what I'd like to do is put on a one-day convention. Um, you know, I, I have going to conventions, but I have a couple of comics geek. So going to conventions, I made a lot of friends, artists, writers, and what I want to do is, is have a, a fair at the school, put on demonstrations, um, you know, clinics, um, and then maybe have one or two, you know, big guest speakers to use the authority. So that's something that we had spoken in the beginning of the year about doing. So then, there's a lot that, you know, I'd like to do. And I guess, unfortunately, I can't receive many students that will-
Do you have a maximum number of children that you would be able to handle at the club? Is there anyone that, you know, you feel comfortable as far as being able to, you know, reach those students, so it's productive? I mean, you can't have a hundred kids come down and facilitate a hundred children.
Right, no, absolutely. Um, once it, it, it got going, and part of it wouldn't be, I'm not, I'm not one for, all right, here's some art supplies, just, you know, have fun.
Yeah.
Um, but once things got, got going, um, I think my classroom hold about twenty-five seats, plus, um, I'm not sure if I said that, but between twenty-five and thirty. And I'm assuming with the twenty-eight kids, even if there's a, you know, thirty percent attrition or it's all twenty kids, that'll fluctuate. And I'm hoping once I get it going, um, that I, I do as I can.
Of the twenty-eight kids that showed up, what was the overlap to the children who were in your class?
Uh, there were some.
Cause to me, I, I see it as, um, almost like a, a club almost like a facilitator of bringing children the information to get to your class. You know, if we only have, I don't know, if we only have twenty-five or twenty-eight spots, I realize the children are into it, wanna be into it, but offering that opportunity, you wanna see as many kids get involved. You know, if you have twenty of those same kids in your class in the club, to me, I don't wanna say I'm kind of getting bang twice for my buck, but I kind of am getting bang twice for my buck.
You need to surrender.
Yeah.
Uh, well, no, I understand.
I'm not getting, I'm not getting, I'm not getting, you know, twice bucked. I'm getting hit twice for the same, you know, for the same service I'm getting.
Right.
It's like the same kids who are in your class are also in the club.
Right, well, some of them were my students in the, the comics class, but some of whom were students that I have in, in class that aren't in the, that aren't in the comic class. I teach drawing, painting, art portfolio, ATR portfolio, and studio and art activity. So I'm not, like I said, I, I had one meeting, um, and it was really just so this way I could, I could take the temperature. Um, I mean, I have a attendance list here, um, and, I mean-
From what I understand, you won't be servicing those children half a year. So if they wanted to continue on, there really is no option to continue on?
As of, as of right now, no.
You could say something about a full year, you would not want to rest the story with that.
I did get a push to, to a full year. But unfortunately, like I said, the skill set is, I'm not just teaching them how to draw, I'm teaching them how to draw, and I'm teaching them how to tell a story with pictures.
Okay, so, so right now, it's probably a half-year course, or?
Yes. Yes, right now, it's a half-year course.
About the full-year course, when you say I get pushed to that, what does that mean? That means that it's-
Uh, it means I spoke to guidance.
So you're still looking for that, was what you said?
No, I, I'm, I'm not sure.
Or has there been approval on that?
Is it a full year, or?
I'm not sure if the coursebook is approved, but it is in the coursebook for next year as a full year.
It's in the coursebook next year for a full year?
Correct. Now, the problem with that is that the fact that it's not a half-year course, and I'm trying to remember what, what Brodsky would, would tell me because his reasoning is not wanting it to be a full-year course, is in the same time, it's gonna open up to students who wanna take it as a full-year course. It's also gonna close it off to students who only have a half-year slot in their schedule and just can't fit it in. So my numbers for the class, my actual number.
Is there an option of offering the same class two half-years? To allow more children to experience that opportunity, that experience?
Uh, I-
I mean, I know that may not be what you're, what you originally were looking for, but I'm thinking if I have that many students involved that wanna get involved in the process, to me, I, I don't know, I, I might want more children to experience it for a half-year than, 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 than a small group of students getting an extended experience. I'm not sure, that's obviously something to, just for discussion, I'm just throwing it out there.
No, no, that's fine.
I don't know enough about it or about the process to say yes or no, one way or the other.
The process as far as making time?
As far as making time, I'm not a comic book geek.
I'll be happy to walk you through.
I'm sure you would, we don't, we have-
But no, no, I understand. And uh, like I said, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing, but um, it's, it's not, uh, if it was just teaching them how to draw or paint, a comic can be drawn or, or painted. A half-year course would be manageable, but unfortunately, just around the time that I'm able to really give them a taste of it, cause a lot of them can't draw, a lot of them can't really write. So I'm, and this is where I'm talking about it, it, you know, it fosters literacy because I'm, I'm talking about story structure, and I'm talking about enhancing story structure.
Right.
Uh, and decompressing story structure for the different types of storytelling. Um, so I'm not just teaching them how to draw, but now I'm teaching them how to draw, you know, it's one to nine to ten drawings a page. So they're learning how to compose it and also write a story. So there's, there's a tremendous amount to cover. And that's been the frustrating part, cause I feel like I haven't really been able to give them, you know, enough time to, to do it. And if it stays a half-year course, once they take it, like, say you guys take it the first half of the year, and then you guys take it the second half of the year, I'm not gonna have any material to publish that book, because right around the time you guys are done with the exercise that I take you through and, and just getting a handle on that skill set, you know, that's it, we're done. Like, I, I just say goodbye to them, you know, I'm like, you know. Some of them are like, well, can I come in and work? It's my off period, and, you know, I don't know, I gotta, I gotta fresh batch of pens. So now you guys are in there, and right around the time that you're getting, you know, a handle on it, you gotta leave, and you can't take it next year, you can't take it again. So the only other option is this club.
Is that what you have now, is two half-years? You teach it twice?
I have one half-year, and then they have me teaching studio and art activity.
Okay, so, so, so you are, you are an art teacher who is incorporating literacy into your, you're not an English teacher?
No.
You're an art teacher, and you're incorporating literacy into the-
Yeah, no, I, I teach, uh, I teach studio and art, I teach drawing, painting, art portfolio, ATR portfolio.
Oh, that's great, you're adding, uh, adding literacy to it.
It was a, I mean, it was a lesson I wrote.
I know what a comic book is, I'm just, I'm just, that's great that he's incorporating literacy into our program. That's a, to me, you know, when you're doing that, that's fabulous.
I bet you throw some history in too. I'm sorry? I bet you throw a bit of history too, like, just throw a small bit of C. Oh, C, yeah.
Hi, I'm, I'm, I'm Linda. So really, the, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I appreciate you for your passion, and we're very grateful for our kids. Thank you very much. The, the board tabled this discussion at the last meeting, and it was, we tabled it to this meeting. Basically, really, it's really just to finalize our discussion. The proposal was made earlier to potentially honor the request to open these two new clubs. There's ways that we can do that for the half-year. We can do a pilot, where we look at the two clubs and see for the next half of the year whether or not the, the, um, the desire for kids to be part of it is sustained. Or we could say, you know what, let's put it into the budget process for, for next year and, and put it as part of our budgetary conversation, which we're beginning tonight, and we're beginning to move through the, uh, the conversation. But really, at this point, um, the only thing that the administration keeps asking for the board to do is whether or not you want to give us the authority to negotiate the potential club stipend, whether the club runs or not. Either one of these clubs runs or not, we will still need to negotiate that stipend. Um, so there's a couple of different things on the table that you really need to just finalize tonight, unless you wanna table it again. So really, it's looking at the idea of running the club as a pilot for the remainder of the year, which we would have to negotiate a stipend for as well. Uh, whether you wanna move it through the, the, into the budgetary process. But again, we would have to negotiate the stipend. So really, at this point, we're really looking whether or not you want us to negotiate the stipend, and whether or not you wanna do, wanna move the two options.
And what about the kids? Isn't it kinda late for them right now? I mean, it's second annual start.
I'm gonna ask you this question. Did we, did we discuss this last week? We were waiting for, uh, we were waiting for reports.
Tim is actually speaking, can you please?
No, I finished, I did finish, I finished, I was just asking.
You have to say it, because I didn't hear you.
Oh, we're already halfway through the year, and this is kinda late, or is this kids at all?
We're actually starting and then the second quarter, well, next, this week actually. We're starting the third quarter on Monday. So we're aligning with the, with the remaining quarters.
What did they have to choose before this?
To become part of a club? No.
Of a club, okay, I'll think about the course.
Not class, no, this is still looking at the clubs.
Well, the one is already existing, she's running the chapel, so that just continues with some as well. And the other one, he's got interest in, he's got already, you know, kind of information, so he's approving it, it's like, yeah. But I believe, didn't we table it with the intention of getting information regarding what our schedule sheet was and what clubs we had? If there's anything that's not running, then- I went through it, but it didn't, really wasn't enough information to tell me whether or not, you tell me all those clubs are running, and all those clubs are accurate?
The ones that you speak.
And there's nothing, there's nothing that's not running, that we have money that we can use for that? Or whether it has to be an additional money? That's what I'm getting out of that?
Nick, I mean, it was my understanding when I read that. First of all, I've been through this before, telling you about information from clubs. It really does take a while to do that. Uh, I've been through this before, and what we saw as a board was manuals of all the clubs, the sign-in sheets, to make sure everything was run right, cause we're paying stipends for this. And that's what we had gotten in the past. What, what we got was, some of these clubs are sending in their, their paperwork, other clubs aren't. I don't think we got very much information.
Based on those reports, there's, there's so many clubs that didn't hand in their sheets for the last four months of the year, so I should assume they're not meeting anymore, and I could stop paying them? I mean, that, that information was not-
That's another topic for another day, where, where it should be called the same-
Well, no, it's not, that's what we discussed last week, that's what we said we wanted to know. So-
The ones that had eight or fifteen, or some dollars.
I'm not gonna hurt those kids, and that's not what this is about.
What's happening, you're saying you have to stop you?
I believe what happened this evening is wrong. We, or there were four people here who said we wanna table this, we wanna get the cover.
Yeah, they tabled more information, and then they provided that information. And what it comes down to is that you can't stop mid-year of running another club.
You're wrong, I'm sorry, you're wrong.
So we approved two clubs, so why, nobody wrong at that time? You approved ABC Club and you approved freshman awareness, but you're wrong at that time.
We approved six.
We extended, we went over budget on that one.
We approved six additional coaches.
We went-
The point of the matter is-
We're talking about clubs, we went over the beginning of the year, that was okay. So now you, what do you do?
We're over budget.
We were over budget then, when we approved those two.
We were over budget, we approved six more, more, uh-
Stop changing the subject, we're talking about clubs.
We're talking about over budget, one code. We're over budget, that is part of, that is part of the same club.
Right, so when, when ABC Club and freshman awareness got approved-
The board came to a consensus, last board meeting. They came looking, we said no, we said we want additional information. Once we get the additional information, we'll see what clubs maybe aren't working, are working, and then we'll do this next year. I bumped into Mr. Costa in the hallway, he's looking at everything, wants to bring clubs in, wants to do it right, give the man a chance. It's his building, his clubs, and they, and it's supposed to be bringing us the paperwork. So our, our responsibility is to make sure that they're up and running, and that they're, they're viable clubs, and we wanna add more clubs. Everyone should get together with Mr. Costa, talk about the club you wanna add. Maybe the clubs that are there aren't working.
I think it's critical that we do look at these clubs over the summer and see which ones to bring forward. But in the meantime, the only, what I mean, the only thing I'm hearing is fifty kids returning away. So maybe that's what I'm getting a little stuck on. We're turning fifty kids away.
I think we, we-
We're not turning fifty kids away, because the, the clam club is already, they're already, they're existing. They're continuing to the end of the year.
It's insulting.
Shane, if anything, you might, you might be turning twenty-eight kids, you might be turning twenty-eight kids. That's what I'm saying. I don't wanna turn twenty-eight kids away.
I don't turn them away, but-
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we got them.
Yeah, there is, there is, uh, you do have to get those-
Do the information?
My, my, my question is, my question is, so many things have gone wrong here, from why some people might have been promised with these movie clubs, to how it was discussed. I think we need to look at the entire protocol of how clubs get approved, when they need to be put in place, like, we have to put a deadline. If you want a club for the following year in September, it has to be in before Sharon needs to put it in the budget process.
From what I understand, there was, there was discussion with this before it even came to us, there was this-
Well, that's another problem, is we were hearing about this in December, but apparently, it was already being discussed at the beginning of the year, and we never heard about it, it was thrown in our laps. That's a problem, that can't go on. And that's where I'm sitting, is I don't wanna turn away kids. And if I have to vote tonight, I'm gonna vote to, to give the kids the club for the rest of the year, because I don't wanna turn kids away. Especially, you know, like you said, right now, the other club is running, but, you know, that doesn't mean that she's getting paid properly. I get that. My question is the whole system. We continue to keep spending one here and there, and though it's just another, whatever my money it is, I'm not gonna say a number, cause I can't, okay? But the process is what we asked for, can we find out? And that information that I was given did not clarify anything for me. All it did was show me a spreadsheet that, yes, some kids, and then there were some meetings that they didn't hand anything, so I don't know if they had a meeting, maybe the teacher sat there, and then meeting, and no kid showed up. I'm sure there were kids there, I'm sure they just didn't hand in the sheet. But that's protocols that we need to fix in order to pay for all these clubs.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
But that's what our discussion came about because this, this to me was an entire mess that isn't about the two clubs anymore. And I apologize to them, but it's not about the two clubs anymore. It's about the whole process of what's going on. You know, so if we want to approve the two clubs for the rest of the year, I have no problem doing that, but I'm not promising that's happening for next year. Because that's the problem. If I promise it now, it's going to stay on the rolls for next year. I, I realize maybe we need to get her paid because she's working really hard. And I get that. And she's been doing the club, I get that. I have no problem with that. She deserves it. You want to do it for the rest of the year and then we're going to look at it over summer? We're going to look at every single club and this process?
I totally agree with that.
How it's done, then that's what we should do.
I'm totally for that.
Because the amount of money that we're spending, and if we're not accountable properly and we don't have people filing proper paperwork, if that's what they're supposed to do, we can't, we can't want something like that. It's just, it's not one line. And that, and that's where I stand. It's not about the two clubs and it's not about turning kids away. I, I want the kids to be in the club. I want, you know, it doesn't matter what it is. I want as many kids to participate as possible. So if we can, if we can make that promise tonight that we're going to look at this and we're going to, you know, give that to the kids for us, you know, I have no problem with that. And we have to, we have to set a goal to look at this.
And at the same time, we approved the two other clubs. That's a discussion we should have been having that night.
You're right, but that's, but we weren't really aware of. But those were attached, those were also attached to other things. They weren't, they were, the civic and the, and the, and the weirdest weekend we were talking about since way back when, before school even started. The first meeting we started talking about that. So that was on our radar. This was something that was kind of like dumped in our lap, but all of a sudden, hey, this has been going on and now you guys need to pay for it or you need to approve it or whatever. We had no knowledge of what's going on. I just think it was done poorly. I don't know who dropped the ball, where the ball was dropped, but. That's my, those are my issues.
This whole process.
Those are my issues. Not, not the clubs, the clubs are not my issues. I have no problem with the clubs and I have no problem with the teachers getting paid to run the clubs. That's not my issue.
I agree, that's not my issue. This is a personal agenda. No, there were four people that said no.
I never said no.
Nobody said no.
I said, I wanted to look at the process and I said we should make a decision and come back in two weeks. Let's gather information. That's what I said.
And you didn't say if fifty kids have to wait till next year, that's okay?
I never said that. I said I wanted to look at the process and come back in two weeks. I said that? Anyone remembers last meeting, I didn't say a word. I actually didn't say anything, but, no, I didn't.
Maybe this is why we should record this.
No.
Video's on YouTube.
I wouldn't have said that. I didn't, I was actually, I was, I agreed with Mylan that I would have, I would have approved them.
Yes.
I was on my, I would agree with Mylan.
Yes, you agree with thinking.
I think it was said that we get information first and see how many others maybe were not.
We can't, we can't.
So, so, all right, so let's go back to the information. So the information we gathered is basically what we have at this point to work with? Is that what we're saying?
Right, nobody's arguing that we.
No, I, I want to know the answer to that question.
The information, the information that we had was the auditing documents that were handed into the internal auditor as of last year. There was very many documents that were missing from that protocol, which is something that needs to be tightened up at the high school and at all the other buildings as well, that the protocol has not been followed as to what paperwork needs to be on file at the end of the year for the auditor. That's the first time we're seeing that dearth of information. That was put together. We then asked for any more information. I asked the day after our board meeting to our principals of the three secondary campuses. There's still information gathering at the secondary, at the high school. That information was really more of the advisors saying how many students they believe were kind of on average coming and what days of the week they met and how much time they met for. There was no other information that was given to us at that point. I know that there's more information that the assistant principal who was going toward that was kind of charged to do. But we tried to get as much information from the last year to see if we could kind of bolster up that information quickly. And what we found was there's protocol not being followed with the amount of paperwork that's supposed to be handed into the internal auditor. That needs to change because we need to be able to, and that's one of the things that the internal auditor is going to be looking at. The stipends, the payroll, personnel, to make sure that everything's being filed in a timely fashion and that we're following the protocol that we set in place. And we're going to find that this protocol was not followed. So that's something that we found in this, in this discussion that we've opened. So that's the information that I have right now for the high school. I gave you everything that was given to me, everything that we put together from the paperwork that we have from last year. We are getting all the charters from the high school clubs that are currently running because they have the days of the week, they're supposed to meet, how, how often, and so we're going to take that information and, and pull that into another spreadsheet for you to vote. That's really all the information that we have right now. There's, there's, you know, we're.
So at this, at this current time, we don't have information on whether there are clubs that may not be meeting anymore? And we have on our list, I know there was a question as to the course guide, had some clubs with Mr. Shear's name listed on it. Is that correct, some of the recalls I'm reading?
Yes, right. And I said that wasn't on the list that was provided through, through the email.
Like, like what's, I don't understand.
The team took it on without getting paid.
Okay, so again, I just think this whole process, we looked at, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of holes in this process that don't make a lot of sense.
And I don't disagree with you either, but in the meantime, while we're investigating, we still have fifty-plus kids that we have to say whether or not we're going to turn away. And I'm not arguing that we need to.
That's just a matter of, you know, curating. Pay differently. They're not, those kids are still in the club. That's, that's not, I mean, not that I don't.
And it's only a pilot, so you don't, once Costa reviews those clubs, he chooses to take which clubs he wants to, to scrap some of the others. But at least it's a pilot, we'll get to know whether or not there is a, a, a.
But ultimately, it gives a decision, foot, there's a decision, why we decide.
We have, we have, we're going to have internal auditing reports as well from this because we just have voted on the payroll, the personnel. We'll, we'll see pieces of it as they move through. We'll, we'll see that, you know, in, in fall of next year. But it's something that we can put into the budgeting process. You know, the principals all do that already. They already tell us, these are the clubs that we want to run for next year. These are the clubs we're presenting to you to run for next year. And then we make those decisions whether we want the line items to increase or we want them to stay the same. And that's really the board's decisions.
But with the first club, the clamming club, can't we make a decision tonight to, like you said, you need to negotiate the stipend?
Right, right.
It's already going on. The, the, the program is occurring. It sounds like a, an awesome program. There's forty students involved, so why can't we just say, yes, we can start the negotiations?
You, you'll vote on that, the consent agenda? So that, you know, if that's something that you're interested in doing and, and you may want to see.
I'm interested in.
I'm interested in the question. The only thing is, so we have two clubs present, so, I mean, say that the other kids don't have an interest in it. I mean.
It's not just, it's not just. The club too, sounds like an awesome club also. Why can't we, again, negotiate a stipend or run it for the rest of the year as a, as a pilot?
And that's all, and that's all that was asked for.
I would, I would vote yea.
Thank you.
I'd like to vote for you two to come and watch it. You two.
All right, discussion number five, the boys and girls swim teams. This, the fifteen sixteen school year, East Ice Slip came to us and asked us to join the swim club of the East Ice Slip team to our team because East Slip, Ice Slip doesn't actually have a pool. We did that this year. It was extremely successful. There were very few students who joined us from East Ice Slip, but they were wonderful members of the team. Not one of the Connect Quad swimmers was hurt by it. The entire team was kept. No, no one was caught.
That was wonderful.
It really was wonderful. We had some excellent swimmers who joined us. They, they swim all year round at the Connect Quad pool through the Connect Quad Swim Club. And so the East Ice Slip School District has asked for that same extension for our boys' leagues. So we, tonight, we, if we're interested in doing that, we would need to vote tonight because Section 11, in order to get swim, get, get all of the different schedules together for next year, needs that approved by February first if we're, if it's something that we're interested in. So I spoke to Mr. Delacabe about this. He has, he said, basically, he spoke to the coach. Coach Alex Chacaloni there is very interested in having the swimmers join together. None of our kids would be cut again. And so everyone would get to swim and East Ice Slip would just join us in that endeavor.
I'd vote yea.
I will yea your hand. We found it for the girls, they're requesting the girls and the boys. We will have to vote on it every year. You may decide at some point, too many of the East Ice Slip swimmers are starting over our girls or boys and, and it's becoming something that is not, not good for our kids.
No, everyone loved it, enjoyed it, not one complained.
Beautiful. Right, so that'll be in the consent agenda to be brought on as well.
Yea.
All right, this will be the, okay, this is Donnelly.
This is just a brief presentation to give the setting that we're approaching the budget process in. These are the factors that affect the tax levy cap calculation. If you remember, you can levy in excess of the allowable levy growth factor if certain conditions exist, which are the first two. Those do not exist for this year. One is a change in the ERS contribution rate. That's the employee retirement system, that pension plan. If the change is greater than two percent, that provides you with an additional ability for additional taxing. We do not have that this year. Likewise, for the teacher's retirement system, it's the same requirement that there be a two percent increase or more to allow for an additional levy in the calculation. Again, that does not exist. We're anticipating a drop in the rate from thirteen point two-six, which it is for fifteen sixteen, to eleven and a half to twelve percent. You can see for the, the first one, for the employee retirement system, there is an estimated drop as well from eighteen point two to the fifteen to fifteen and a half percent range. The tax-based growth factor, which is the amount of brick and mortar increase in the tax base in the, in the assessment rolls, was one point zero zero two-five last year. This year, it's only one point zero zero eight. When I say this year, I mean the calculation for sixteen seventeen. The allowable levy growth factor is less than one percent this year. It's zero point one-two percent for sixteen seventeen's tax year. The year where now it was one point six-two. For two thousand twelve, it was two percent. Two thousand thirteen, it was two percent. Two thousand fourteen, it was one point four-six. Fourteen, for the fifteen sixteen year, one point six-two. And you'll remember that factor is based on the lower of the increase inflation for two percent. And the final factor that comes into play with the tax levy cap calculation is the tax levy exclusion, which looks at the interplay between what our building aid is and what our debt services, principal and interest that we're paying. This just gives a visual of the numbers that I read out. The two percent for the first two years, dropping down to one point four-six, then one point six-two for this year, and the zero point one-two that we're seeing for next year. This shows what our total formula-based aid has been and how it has varied. It's a little misleading. The bar graph makes it look like it's a tremendous increase. It's really not. We're going from forty-five and a half million in fourteen fifteen to forty-eight point one in fifteen sixteen. That's not that great of a spread. For sixteen seventeen, we have a projection, it's just the proposal, of a two-point-six increase over the fifteen sixteen year. Whether or not that's tied into the thirty-twelve D adoption process remains to be seen. And here we are, we keep hearing that the gap elimination adjustment has been eliminated. The orange bars show the takeback, the reduction in what our aid is actually due to us for the formula-driven aid calculations. And the lighter color is showing the give-back. So you see the net, the, the big orange bars are bigger than the, the, the hail peach there. It still nets to a decrease every year. So they keep talking about giving back. They're just taking less every year. And how much they took is over thirty million just from Connect Quad. And they're not talking about restoring all of that aid that we've been missing all of these years. They're just talking about reducing how much they're taking. It's very misleading. Okay, so that's the environment we're in as we're going through the budget process.
You mean the blackmail?
Huh?
You mean the blackmail? Extortion?
Well, whatever it is, we won't get honey to kids who are taking tests.
That's not true.
Can we be right? Is that what it said?
There's still a fear of that. I didn't see a.
Can I speak to this, Linda?
Sure. I, I know on the front cover of Newsday, we actually got, the state superintendents actually got a letter from the federal government basically saying that they have the right to take away two hundred million dollars from the state if the state does not, the state itself does not get to a ninety-five percent participation rate in annual assessments. That's really always been the case. The ESEA, the Educational, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and now it's been reenacted as the ESSA. Basically, it states that the, that they have, they have the right to withhold Title I funds for the state administration, from the state administration if the state itself does not reach a ninety-five percent. That's the letter that was sent from the federal government to the state. In addition, the state has enforcement authority under twelve thirty-two C of the Federal, the Federal General Education Divisions Act, which permits the state to withhold Title I funds from the districts if the districts itself has not complied. These legal terms have always existed. This is not anything new. This is really, in my opinion, the federal government trying to put down the hammer. The, the legalese has, has always existed. So I just really think that this is really just the federal government who is now under the influence of John King, saying, New York, you better get yourself in line. But I, I, again, in my opinion, I don't know how they would withhold from children. So, you know. So truthfully, to me, this was just a hammer saying, we've got it, we can do this to you. I can't imagine that they ever would. The legalese has always been there.
I went to the Ice Slip, uh, meeting last night, Ice Slip School Board Association meeting for cluster schools. And they said that there should be another letter-writing campaign to stop that. So I'm only repeating what this told me last night, what they were talking about. And that was one of the topics that they mentioned, that there should be another letter-writing campaign. So perhaps we should start that here in these districts to write about.
To the federal.
To the government, both governments. State and federal.
Well, it's, it's kind of a good segue, I think, into the next piece as well. And I'm going to ask for board permission to do some, some writing as well. And if you want to give your question to write both of these things, please let me know. I did take a look at Governor Cuomo's Parental Choice in Education Act, which is once again packaged together with some very small good things and a whole lot of endings. So in front of you on the board table, I gave you a Parental Choice in Education Act overview. On the, on Governor Cuomo's website, you'll see that he is joined by Cardinal Timothy Dolan and some, Rabbi David Kupchik, as well as County Executive Ed Ben Gano, who are touting the benefits to the Parental Choice in Education Act. So in front of you, you have just a brief overview. This act with absolutely no funding source. They gave us no indication of what the funding source would be. It is going to buy one hundred and fifty million dollars in tax credits. And I'll tell you how they're breaking those up just so that you have some information. Seventy million dollars of that, so almost half, would be a tax credit for families with income under sixty thousand dollars a year. And they would give a five hundred dollar tuition credit to those folks for the students to attend a non-public school. An additional fifty million dollars would be part, come out of that tax credit would help to fund a sixty-seven million dollar scholarship fund for low-income and other students in order for them to be able to attend private schools or out-of-district public schools. So both of those are prudently placed, away from their, their home public school. They're also providing tax credits for up to seventy-five percent of donations that fund scholarships for the same private or out-of-district public schools. So that's basically a hundred and twenty million dollars or more of the hundred and fifty million dollar proposal and tax credits, basically to help fund non-public schools. That, the, the small piece, that is how they tend to tie things up in Albany right now, twenty-seven million for educational program programs for public schools, with no indication of how that would happen, whether that would be grant applications or what, but no more information than that. As well as a tax credit for up to seventy-five percent of donations made to public schools and not-for-profit organizations that support public school programs, such as pre-kindergarten and more extended-day programs. And another ten million dollars in tax credits for our, our public school educators to purchase two hundred dollars worth of instructional tiers for our teachers' lectures. So basically, thirty-seven million. So basically, $37 million out of the $150 million in tax credits would potentially go to support public schools. And the remainder would be funneled away for families who want their children out of the public school realm, whether that's private schools, parochial schools, or other out-of-district public schools. So I did talk to legal counsel about the idea of writing and presenting a Board of Education resolution about the negative impact that this could have to public schools. What I was advised was, it cannot be partisan. We would need to document evidence of potential negative impacts. Quite frankly, there's a part of me that wants to talk about how unconstitutional this is, as we've done in the past, because I don't see a big separation of church and state. But that's my own personal opinion. So I would like your permission for us to begin to put together with legal counsel a resolution for us to hold on at the next Board of Education meeting, decrying this and the negative impact that would have on public education.
Absolutely. Excellent. Absolutely.
I will do that. And I will also do, I will also put together a letter and a resolution regarding the threatening mail that we got from the federal government and that it's going to come with all the other schools.
Great, thank you.
At your superintendent meeting, did everyone, was this discussed?
There was actually...
It would be great if every board, every school district...
Agreed, and I have no problem reading the way and giving them our template, because I think she'd write really well here. So I, there's actually an advocacy meeting on Saturday that was delayed by the lizard that I will be attending next Saturday. So I'm hoping that that'll be something to discuss. And hopefully, I will be able to have at least a piece of a draft done with the legal counsel at that point to share.
I can put you on to a lot of this.
Yeah.
That would impress that, that would impress on the test of a few superintendents.
I just want to remind everyone that there is only one public comment, and this is a planning session. I want everyone to be courteous of their three minutes. Please do not exceed. I'm going to let you know when you're at 30 seconds to the end of your three minutes. I was going to give you a gentle reminder to close your comments. Step to the podium, address the board president only. You may address one or more topics at his time allotted. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, or grade or building. For safety, please exit the podium after your time has concluded. You either turn the podium and circle or move onto the right.
A couple of quick things. I sent a letter the other day. I hope you share that with Mrs. Adams, with the buildings and grounds crew. I got a report from all my teachers, from all the buildings, guys did a heck of a job under very tough circumstances, walkways, getting in to and fro. Good job.
I already shared with all the heads, so they have a little proceed.
Great idea. It would be a delay. Congratulations on that. Sure. And if you don't, that was a good decision. I just want to read something to you about the education investment tax credit. It has to be pointed out, and I'm hoping that as board or as individuals, and those folks are here, keep in mind, it does nothing, does nothing to help public education. All of you that are here either have kids in the public system, okay, or involved in the public school system. I also have to make note for those who aren't involved politically, as I am, okay, our local legislators, Tom Croce, Phil Boyle, John Flanagan, all are co-sponsors of that investment tax credit, okay? Check on the state senate, our website, you'll see their names there as the co-sponsors for that bill. So just keep that in mind come November. Again, it's for private institutions, it's for hedge funders, it's for millionaires. That is why that bill, who that bill helps. I just want to be quick to the letter that we're sending, okay, to the legislators. As a constituent, I write to urge you to oppose the Parental Choice in Education Act. The education scholarship and program tax credit is designed for wealthy individuals and corporations. Under this proposal, individuals and corporations who receive a tax credit equal to 75% of their authorized contributions to an educational scholarship organization, a local education fund, or a public school entity up to a maximum annual credit of $1 million. I know, not too many people that I know have up to $1 million to donate to any type of school other than wealthy people. Under the family choice education credit, tax credits will be given to families who pay tuition and choose to send their children to private schools. This is a fancy way of developing a voucher system, which again, takes money from public schools and isn't the private institution. It is the beginning of the end of the public school system. That's why this is not a union issue, it's not a teacher issue.
You have 26 seconds.
It's a public school issue. So everyone here should be writing too. Senator Croce, Senator Flanagan, Senator Boyle, okay? And letting them know, okay, that this hurts public education, and we're not going to be supporting them if they go along with this. Lastly, thank you for the discussion on the clubs. I agree with you 100% on getting your side of the table in order. No argument from us on that. And I do hope and appreciate when you do vote, I think later on, that you do allow these clubs to go forward. I think you heard how great they will be for our kids. And moving forward, whatever you guys have to do, we respect and appreciate.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, Johnny.
Last, two weeks ago, we talked about the procedures, and we mentioned it a lot tonight, that each school has different procedures that are not policy. And I did a search for procedures at each level, and then I did like a major search. And what I came up with was this, and I'll gladly share it with you. And there's no procedures online. So how is a parent to know what each school's procedures are in certain cases, such as the cases that we talked about two weeks ago? I think that that needs to be online or accessible to parents so that we know what the procedures are, where the appeals process is, what we have to do in certain situations. If it's not online, we have no idea. The only thing that we can look at is policy. So again, I'm going to bring up the procedures. So we searched, this is all that comes up. And each school has a different thing. And one is the attendance procedures, building procedures for Hell of a Duffield. So I don't know if that's something. And library procedures. We didn't really have a comprehensive procedures that you guys keep alluding to. So parents have no idea what each school does and how they do it differently. So maybe you should think about putting that online as well. The AP test, weighted average, we talked about that two weeks ago as well. I just wanted to see if you guys were looking at the policy on that or the procedures on that, or again, is that at the school level?
The principal has put together a draft letter that will be sent to the board.
Okay, all right, so I'll hold on to that one. Also, I noticed when to foil records is, you know, of course, I went to the Committee on Public Government to see what the rules were. And it's 25 cents a page unless it's via email, then it's free. There may be no basis to charge for copies of records that are presented electronically. So I pulled our foil form, and there's no box that I can check to say that I want it electronically. So maybe this needs to be revised. And finally, just about these clubs, of course, you know, I think anything for the kids is what we should be doing, and not spending money on so much administration, but more on the kids. But I was just curious, with these two clubs in particular. It seems, just sitting back there, it seemed that a lot of these clubs have, are the students in these classes, and then maybe one or two friends came with them? So are these the students from that class that are kind of doing this club in addition to their class? Or is it all other kids all over the place that maybe this teacher doesn't have in their class?
I think I asked that question to the teacher.
Oh, okay, I must have missed that.
And it was, it was a mix.
It is a mix. It's not 40 kids in the class plus maybe 23 kids?
Well, we don't have an electronic class.
Yeah, for one club would not be the same as the class. The color book seemed to be some overlap, and he clarified that there was not, there was not a majority of the students who were in the class that were also interested in the club.
All right, that's what I was just curious. Again, I think any club of kids is great. The other thing that I wanted to know, though, we talked about turning away kids my little lot. And I don't want to turn away any kids. We know that we have sports cuts. We turn away all those kids that get cut. So we should maybe start internals for them now, so that they're not turned away. What I'm saying is, you're going to turn away some kids there, you can't turn away kids otherwise. So you've got to be fair across the board. So be careful what you wish for, and that's what you're going to get. So just wanted to bring that point up and put that out there. Thank you.
This information thing, right? It would have to do with the fact that certain files might be electronic, and certain files might be paper, that they have to be sent non-electronically?
How is the state that you can get the information electronically available? Anybody who might like that in, or request that they would like electronic, right? If they are available, that would have to be provided.
If not, then we have to, not be charged.
This is what we're just trying to clarify, maybe as to where some of the confusion might be. If they're available electronically, then we're providing that way. If not, then we have to provide it, then we have to charge for it, for making copies, doing the work.
Correct, you can do, you can do half and half. You can do part electronic and part paper.
What I'm saying is, if it's not available electronically...
Right.
Yeah, we would try everything electronically as freely as we could.
Right. But on the form, there's no, well, my point was just on the form, that there was no way to, like, parents didn't know that.
Hey, guys, this is all a good news thing, so don't worry. The first thing I wanted to say, Matt LeRium, two things. The first is, representing the Council of PTAs, I wanted to thank you for, in the policy, for clarifying this aspect of the local diploma, which has been a big issue of discussion amongst the parents. There's been a lot of concern about that. I wanted to request, if possible, through some venue, it was presented at a meeting, that we have a 92% graduation rate. I'm imagining that's a four-year persistence. I imagine there's a five-year persistence rate that's a little higher. I'm wondering if you could break down for purposes of that discussion, the remaining 8%, it doesn't have to be right now, it could be at some, in some way. This is related to the idea of the local diploma, because people are concerned about what percentage of those students not graduating might be covered by IEPs or 504s, which has been clarified in the policy. So just because it's been discussed, a lot of people asked me, I wanted to clarify that. So thank you for that. The other issue that I want to represent, I'm just really mostly, and I think there's connections to try and make in my timeframe, but mostly, I want to just highlight it as a, you know, kind of privacy citizen or resident of the district. Another policy that you reviewed tonight, and sorry I missed the policy review part. I know you were saying to not see me there for that, was 2270, which is the consultation legal services, I looked at the policy draft. Nothing in there prevents any of this, but the policy does lay out a kind of position whereby the attorneys really are kind of here as a safety net or as a device to prevent liability for the board and for members of the administration. Mrs. Adams mentioned a few things, many people discussed it tonight concerning the kind of state policies on education. Kind of the war on education, I agree with Mr. Felicia. There's a war on public education that's facing all of us. I'm wondering, and some of this may be in the RFP that's discussed in the proposal and not in the proposal itself, but there was, I'm wondering if in, considering the wording of that policy or in the wording of the RFPs, which I have not seen, I imagine it's a contract that's publicly available, but I didn't look at it after looking at the policy, that the board opened room for itself to be a proactive force in legal issues concerning this hostile legislative climate. Mrs. Adams used a word that she thinks that some of the wording, this legislation, is not constitutional, right? And the recourse that we get from this side of the bench all the time is things like write letters, do all that stuff. Two of the three men in a room are in federal indictment.
30 seconds.
Right. So it's, just to write letters is probably not strong enough. Some of the war on education is a war on local control. You are the local controllers. To the extent to which you are not empowered to be proactive in response to that means, to a certain extent, you're not valuable, right? I mean, we value, we want to have local control. We want to position local controllers to be able to pursue local control through all means and not just writing letters. I think writing letters is great, the enforceable text is great, but I would urge you to be as proactive as possible. And if you can do that in the policy...
Thank you, Matt.
If you have any good ideas, can you share them, to be more proactive?
Is what we're doing now.
No, 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 no. We're playing a part in the...
If anyone, if anyone has any good ideas, please, help us. We need help.
And we, as the parents and the residents and the civics, we all want to be proactive. Because there's total spirit of solidarity.
100%.
100%.
All right, does anyone else have a comment? Okay, we're closing all the comments. Moving over to Consigna Jenner. We have items two through seven. I'm going to ask for a motion, and then we can have a discussion. So I'll motion. I'll motion it. Okay. Uh, does anyone have any questions regarding these items?
Number seven, which was over before, correct?
Yes.
And that means that we are...
We'll need to move back into executive session for contract negotiation.
That means we are, we discussed moving on there as a...
Pilot.
Pilot for the rest of the year? That's what, that's what, that's what, that's what that's at, at this point?
Yes, a pilot.
So I'm going to stand on the seventh, because I want to have some more information. I don't want to back out. Everything clarified, maybe you'll clarify for me in the exact...
I'm going to have to take a motion to pull number seven. That's a separate vote.
So we need a separate motion, please?
Motion.
Can you tell if you're...
I'm not going to use, but it's funny.
So now I'm going to rechange that. I need a motion from item one through six, and we're going to vote on, I'm sorry, two through six, and we're going to vote on separately, seven separately. All right, so I need a new motion. I'll motion, if I can.
The two through six motion.
All in favor for two through six?
Aye.
Okay, then we're taking seven as a separate. I'll take a motion, I'll motion.
Second.
All right, so it's Lee and Ted that are abstaining for this?
Yes.
So, Nick?
Make it easier for you to be easy, but I said no. I mean, I just don't like the way it's working.
There's no argument about that, but the biggest, the latest thought anymore longer being taken, until we get more information. We are going to get more information, but we shouldn't infringe on when this club should start, or potentially start, or even negotiate.
Lee, it's all about children.
It's all about children. You know what? Take your conspiracy theories. This is about children.
All it's about.
So, Nick?
Pilot, meaning that next year, it's going to be looked at as far as all of the clubs?
It's going to be looked at in, at July 1st.
And Ted is coming up with that. So we're not, at this point, because we're voting on to reapprove for this year, we're not including it in the budget cycle?
No, it's something for, it's a discussion of what...
Discussing for the budget cycle.
We may have a beautiful turnout, you just have to see where it goes. At least offered as a pilot and led to see if there's...
Well, that's what Nick's trying to clarify. It's just being right now, working as a pilot. That's what it's, it's just a pilot. The rest of the year.
We can't have discussion, but we're ready to discuss this. Just about the wording.
The tax looking for clarity, so we may be able to...
Depending on you, delaying two weeks and then two weeks...
I'm trying to, this week, I'm trying to get clarity so we can get it done right now. We're trying to get clarity so we can get that right now. That's what Ted's asking.
Oh, okay, that's right, that's right.
That's what Ted's asking.
What's, what, what about the wording?
Okay, so you want to make this, well, I hear it now. So you want to make this a pilot club, not a pilot program, as opposed to a program?
It's not a whole, it's a club. Yes.
Okay, so then, I mean, we got a better program that's not a club. And I don't think she's getting as many resources as she would get if it was, she was a club. So why can't...
The her term program's not going to change. She's going to be paid differently.
Well, that's just, I want, I want, I want a club.
That's the only thing. She's going to be paid as a stipend for a club, rather than the $67.00 for the stipend she paid.
I understand, but is it going to be a program or a club?
A club.
Same thing. We're looking at a half your stipend for each one.
Okay, so, but the club gets more than the program?
Correct.
Okay, so why is the program not getting as much as what a club would get?
Because it was a grant-funded program, from my understanding, for a long period of time. And Mrs. Torcio was willing to do that grant-funded program as was stipended as a sham pay when she left the district after hours, different hours. That grant funding has now ceased, so the program, just help me if I'm misrepresenting it. But now the grant funding has now ceased, so the program, am I, just help me if I'm misrepresenting it. but now the grant funding has ceased, so we're looking for an alter way to fund the program, and the way to do that would be to make it a club. Am I correct?
So the, so the grant no longer exists to pay schamone, right? For the club that is already existing, right?
Exactly. The club restarts in January, correct? Because it's a, it's a year cycle, the cycle really begins in January. So it's not like it's too late to start the club this year and have a program run full cycle.
It's been an operation.
Yes.
All right, I'm just, what Ted's saying is he understands that we would like back to the club, but he's looking at the possibility of the comic book club being a program, which I guess would get schamone. Is that an option?
Not really.
I think that's an option, that's what I'm saying, I don't think that's an option. She was, she was getting, she has a grant, that's what it do with us.
But she's not, but if she got stipend, she would get more than a program.
We don't have a program.
Right, a program, a program wasn't grant, wasn't a program, wasn't a grant.
Separate grant from someone else, how it's not.
Yeah, it's not.
So there's nothing to do.
That program, club, running system, that, you know, maybe we're algae on, she, if she gets a stipend, wouldn't she be opening more than she did as a program?
Potentially.
She should get more, and then more outsized of the resources. I would love to see you down at Westlake, or basically come to...
Oh, we could go to the Westlake, we go to the Maritime Museum, we'll be there in March.
So, you know, you got, Lloyd College right there, they have fish hatch for you.
Yeah, I know, we went there last year.
So there's a lot of stuff to do there.
Watch the face.
Exactly, right, so.
Those are activities that are during, those activities during the school day really offset by the fact that, you know, when Ms. Torjean goes with these, with these kids, that's during the school day, we're really looking to expand in after-school and maybe give her the stipend that she deserves, a professional stipend for her time after-school.
Is that what it says in here?
Well, the way, really, really, what we're looking for right now is authorization for us to, to have Bob negotiate with, with the CTA in order to get a stipend that's appropriate for a club that we're going to pilot for six months.
For a half-year stipend.
And then at that, at the, you know, in May, before we push all the clubs out for next year, because we would ask to, you know, we usually start looking at staffing of those clubs, we will have the principals ask that these are the clubs they want to run, this is how much it would cost the district, that would be part of the budget conversation. These would be part of the budget conversation for next year, but not guaranteed, because it's a pilot that ends June 30. But we can reevaluate to, you know, whether or not we want to be a club for next year.
And that's why I wanted that on information, because I'd say, hey, listen, these clubs over here aren't doing anything.
I agree, exactly. I think that information right now for this, for this school year, we're in the midst of gathering that, that's why I went back a school year to see what I can do.
Yeah, there's no argument there.
You're right, you're absolutely correct. And we saw some clubs that were signing in two kids at a time. To me, these clubs are very, very valuable. Two kids being seen by the same advisor is more of a coffee clod than a club.
Right, exactly, and that's a topic that we need to have, a discussion, but that's, you know, like, we shouldn't, you know...
Can I just ask another dumb question? We're over budget, obviously, we know that, we'll discuss that. So let's say, so we approved this, we agreed, do the thing, whatever, whatever, it's kind of a philosophy. We're trying to do it right now, I don't know. Where's the money?
Good question.
I mean, obviously, we have it, have it somewhere. I'm not writing a check.
We would have, really, we would have to have a budget transfer from another line.
Exactly. This is not the time to be looking at cell phones.
Why would we not just wait for the proper information and then make the decision?
Because right now...
Well, we have a teacher who's running a club, who's working, who's not being paid, that's the first.
Exactly, so we're talking about a lot of two.
And we have kids that are being serviced, we have kids that are being serviced. So I'm not against it, I just want to make sure that we have a whole, global process. So I'm comfortable with it.
The information can't be gathered in the next two weeks.
I'm comfortable moving forward. All right, so let's, I'm comfortable moving forward on the pilot for the rest of the year.
Ted, you're abstaining, or you're part of...
As long as we're looking at the whole situation regarding...
You're abstaining? All right, so then I'm voting yes, to negotiate stipends. Nick?
Yes, I'm comfortable with, as long as it's a pilot, and then we're looking at the whole process moving forward. I don't want her to consider it.
Ted, are, Ted is abstaining. Oh, you said yes? Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, and, yep, you know what, Ted? For some reason, you're, I'm not hearing you down here, so if you could just speak a little louder.
Here's another lucky microphone.
Use your military voice, so I can hear you. All right, so now, um, I would, motion carries. All right, so we're moving into exec session. I'm going to request that we take a five-second recess before that, and I have to read... Hold on. No, 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 yes, 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 hold on, hold on, don't leave. You have to wait a second, then you could go back on your phone.
Wow.
Motion for the Board of Education to move into exec session in accordance with Open Law Section 105-F. And let me just show you particular contracts and contract negotiations.
Motion, shall I say?
All in favor, all aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming on tonight.